Rebecca, do you have the recording going? Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes, we're ready.
I hope this sounds good.
Yes, you can't wait. I'm going to open the council time for Thursday, December 20. I would accept a motion for the minutes of the December 2 meeting. Motion approved by Chair. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the December 2 meeting, although I was absent. I've read the minutes, so I will vote to approve. On paper? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. I believe we've pulled the item, point 19, is that correct, Kathleen?
Yes, that's correct. We're still working with some language and we'll be bringing it back.
All right. Let's move then to the equestrian facility calls. Who's presenting on that? Is it Mitch or?
Mitch. Let me see if he's...
Oh, I don't even see him.
We don't see that he's on right now, so I work... I'll ask staff to go call right now, and if we could, because he's on the next... He may be on the next item as well. Maybe we could jump down to item 1.5.
All right, let's move to item 1.5, and I think the sheriff is here.
This will be actually...
Okay.
We had a conversation last week with the sheriff during a work session, and there was a request to have a meeting with the sheriff's office, the prosecuting attorney, and the courts. And so I did meet with all of the stakeholders on Tuesday morning. I have provided... I'm going to provide some updates from that meeting on what some general data is, the reviews, and next steps. Most of the stakeholders are not on this morning because there is still a little bit more work to do, but as you mentioned, the sheriff's office is on, so if there's any specific questions for them. So basically, we met, just some general data, as of Tuesday morning, 389 beds in the jail were occupied. The maximum number of beds that could be used and to ensure safety in COVID protocols is around 440 to 450. The total beds available in jails, 516, but that's not taking into consideration the population and the COVID protocols. 18 beds are available at other jurisdictions, and they certainly come with specific criteria on who they would accept out of the population. The current population is dropping, and it's my understanding that this is very similar to previous seasons. The Superior Court Prosecuting Attorney continues to assess and evaluate and implement interventions as they have previously communicated. Their goal is to maintain interventions that ensure public safety. There was a conversation regarding looking at the juvenile facility and the capability of them housing adult inmates as well. RCWC prohibits site and sound restrictions between juveniles and adult offenders, so therefore juvenile is not an option for additional bed spaces. This is also not a cost-effective opportunity as well for transportation and staffing needs for juvenile. With regards to next steps, the window upgrades that Chief Bishop talked about last week and as well previously, the sheriff's office is working directly with the Otter's Office and facilities and will be bringing forward a staff report as soon as possible. This could be done as early as next week to ensure that we can move forward with replacing those windows to ensure the security at the jail. The jail work center for next steps, sheriff's office is working with facilities to obtain quotes on upgrades at the JWC. This would include such as architecture and construction. If this is a path forward, it could increase the beds by approximately 75. Considerations that are going to be considered during this review is staffing availability and costs, mental health, medical, as well as long-term plans and how it drives with the... any recommendations moving forward with regards to jail. And then they also be using... They could use the JWC for individuals serving sentences that could reduce transportation needs. The costs will be reviewed with the Otter's Office to determine the funding availability, and that this will be brought back to council for further consideration. There will be continual conversations between the sheriff's office, the prosecuting attorney, and Superior Court, and any additional information or changes will be shared with the council in the future. I would also like to note that the sheriff did bring to my attention this morning on some of the talking points is that there are other life safety projects that the sheriff's office has been worked on, and they're backed up and in progress. So they'll be evaluating those with this other work that they're looking at with the JWC. So that is the update from the meeting this week with the stakeholders. They will continually follow up and bring information back to the council. If there's specific questions, I can follow up with the prosecuting attorney or the courts. And again, as you mentioned, the sheriff's office is on the meeting this morning if you have any other specific questions at this time.
Aren't there other questions, either Kathleen or Sheriff Atkins?
So I did have a question for the question, my chair. So the first general question is, as we look at the potential remodeling, can any of that be covered by potential CARES Act funding or the next subsequent bill that might come out of Congress since we are doing this distancing and safety protocols as a result of positive tests and the impact of COVID? So is it under existing criteria, can we get some reimbursement for any capital improvements we make to house?
Yes, so the CARES Act spending has suspended now for us. We don't know what's coming next year. With that said, we have been able to utilize CARES Act spending for other costs in the county, so we might have some availability of other funding to support this, but it's indirectly related to COVID, but it's obviously directly related to COVID as well. But just... So that's where the Otter's Office has been really instrumental in managing the reimbursements and then what other resources that we have available due to COVID.
Super. So the other question, maybe this is for the sheriff, I wasn't on the last meeting. So I knew that from a previous meeting that we'd moved the second machine there, we're doing more testing. Optimistically, we thought through distancing and testing, we were going to contain the outbreak, and then there was a spike after that. Of the numbers, has it now flattened out? Where are we on the number of positive tests within the jail? And I would ask about the impact on correctional officers as well. And how many people of those that tested positive had to go to the hospital? You know, how much... How many are actually very sick and could not be taken care of within the correctional facility?
Sheriff Atkins, can we answer that, sir? Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Meddy, can I ask you your first question, number of cases? Tuesday was 44, Wednesday was 38, today, this morning, was 27. So you're actually accurate. It did seem to start to flatten, and then we continued to search Monday through Tuesday. As for... At none, no inmates, as Dr. Melnick tested by last Friday, has been transferred to the hospital. We continue to treat here adequately. And that continues to today. I do have one staff member who was hospitalized last week. He is now out of the hospital and at home resting, and I don't know anything further past that, but that's the only staff person. I don't have staff members, I have yesterday's briefing. I had six on quarantine and three ill, but the three ill, I didn't... It wasn't attributed to COVID. And the one staff person was included in the six. Did that answer your question, sir?
Absolutely, and thank you for that and all the hard work. It sounds like whatever you're doing is really working as best it can. So that's positive news. Thanks for that update.
Was there a question in there about... The other thing, was there any question in there about... Or did you take your question and answer about remodeling, etc.? Wasn't there something in there, can I read about that?
Yeah, Kathleen spoke to that. Under pressing criteria, it looks like, you know, as an indirect cost, we would be able to recoup it if not above...
Oh, yeah, you were asking about care for me. Okay, yeah, I... Yeah. Okay, sorry.
This is the sheriff talking now. There's just one point I would like to bring up that I don't want to be lost on council and county managers as we work through this process, because I think we made a lot of good headway and hitting on a lot of important areas. As we look to remodel, we really need to be cautious, I believe, in what it is that we do in terms of long-term fix for the jail problem that we have. We've been working on this since 2015, and we really haven't reached, in my opinion, now consensus as to what we're really going to do. And so I think you need to keep that strongly in mind. I know with the current conditions, we're probably not looking at a new jail in this facility like what was originally proposed, but I don't know what the backup for that is. I don't know if you're thinking long-term that we can upgrade and spend the money widely at the jail work center to harden that, but at the same time, what can we do about the existing building we're in? Maybe it is moving us out of here and remodeling its bottom floor and making sure that it's either a court or more bed space or does something to relieve part of the other issues with the criminal justice process. Of course, that means we have to find room for us, but I think we have a big building across the street to the north of us that may not have as many people in it in the future. So I just ask that, for our peace of mind, we're going to need to know where it is the council was thinking about going and what does that look like, so that we can wrap our heads around the next steps and help guide that process, but we don't even know what that process is yet. So I just want to throw that out and say that that's vitally important to us and is on our mind every single day that we come to work here. And the correction staff having to work in that environment upstairs on a good day is a bad day, and now is not good at all. So thanks for that opportunity. I just wanted to throw that out there and make sure that I got that on record.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff Atkins. I... It is a pressing issue, and I would say partly because of COVID, we've kind of, you know, we've kind of kicked the ball down the path, and... But we really do need to take it off, so that we know what we are going to do in the future. So my hope is that coming year, we'll be able to talk more... Talk more about it and sort of look at what our options are. I know that we have also a facility... We're looking at all the facilities, and maybe that will help us in our determination, but this specifically with the jail. It doesn't... It has not stopped. Just because we aren't talking about it, the issue has not stopped, and we do need... We cannot let it continue to go, and we do need to make plans. So that is understood, and hopefully we'll get to that next year.
Thank you.
Soon next year.
Thank you.
Early next year, actually.
Sheriff...
Okay, yeah.
Just before...
Kathleen.
Just before we move on, just a clarification for Chief Bishop, just for the record, so for individuals who are listening. When you're talking about the cases per day and like the numbers of the 44 and the 39, that's a total number, not total new per day. So I just want to make sure that that is accurate and stated for our community who's listening.
Extremely accurate. That is the number of active cases. They're not new. So if they were active on the Monday count, then they would be active on the Tuesday count and Wednesday count. If they recovered and were cleared, they would be taken off of that count.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. I imagined that, but it was, but I think it's very good that it was clarified. Thank you, Kathleen. Does that do it for this subject then?
That's all that we have.
All right, okay. We'll move on, and if... Are we ready for the equestrian facility code change? That discussion, I mean?
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Mitch Nichols. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, yeah, we were putting our thumbs up, but apparently they can't see us.
We're still struggling with technology here. Anyway, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. I'll go over the results of our public participation for the equestrian facility that we put together and which you all attended. I read there was a report in front of you that has an Excel spreadsheet and lists the categories across the upper left, and that were the discussion topics. And category one were building requirements, category two, private versus public fees, category three were operational impacts, and other was category four. The feedback that we got echoes very closely the feedback that was received by council in a public meeting in January, when council was visited by a large number of people seeking during the public participation component of that meeting. The trends that have developed as a result of the feedback are primarily focused on mitigating the cost and permitting complexions for these sites or equestrian facilities. And generally, they are very interested... You can see at the bottom across 43 where it specifically shows the numbers of responses relevant to the specific category. That there was a large interest in redefining public versus private facilities. And you may recollect that a lot of the feedback we received were involved boarding facilities and smaller operators that were being treated as public equestrian facilities because they didn't meet the specific definition of a boarder with under five horses, or five horses or less on their property. And realistically, in order to make a living as a boarder and be able to pay your operational costs, you may need more horses than that, but they felt it was inevitable to classify them as a... As a commercial equestrian facility, simply because they boarded horses and people, horse owners came out to their properties to ride and care for their horses. The other trends that developed were the clarification of boarders versus... And private arenas versus public arenas. Public is generally would be more like the event center, Clark County Event Center, or other equestrian venues where they actually hold competitions and so forth. Some of the smaller arenas that we have in the county, and by nothing small, but smaller in a sense than that quite the size of the Clark County County, do hold periodic visitation with customers and horse owners and people interested in buying horses, and they show their horses and show their face photo. And so it's important for them, us, to consider public. They're catering to a very specific audience, and they made that pretty clear in their testimony. They would appreciate that redefinition of private arenas and make sure they're not categorized as public. The other issue, primary issue, was the grand problem of existing structures. And this would include structures that may have been built as ag exempt structures previously, and these are private covered horse arenas. And the cost associated with adding fire protection systems and structural analysis and structural components that would meet the standards of the building code for commercial arenas is prohibitive cost-wise. They just don't... In their testimony, they said, "We don't make that much money. We're not making a huge amount of money at this, and we've got to pay our operational costs. And if you compel us to spend all this money retrofitting our existing structures, it is going to put us out of business." And that was reiterated multiple times in the comments. So generally, they're wanting the building code requirements and zoning requirements. And I would point out that we do, in our code, land use code, in urban livestock code, we have a very permissive approach to livestock and just any zone in the county right now. And when you talk about an agricultural use, it would include structures to support that use. And a lot of these operators are on smaller lots, smaller properties, some are under five acres, and maybe only have 10 or 15 horses. And for them to have to go through the more complex land use review and building code analysis and review and permitting process and pay all those fees simply to manage the 10 or so horses they have is truly cost prohibitive for them. And that was, again, it was something that was reiterated numerous times in the testimony. The summary that provided, you just focused on the categories to make sure that there was a good alignment, there was a nexus between what we see being reported in the numbers and the comments areas provided by the private respondents. All in all, it was a fantastic event. It was well moderated, and I felt, and I think the attendees felt, that they had a good opportunity to express themselves, and I'm sure they're looking forward to moving forward. So with that, can I take some questions?
Are there questions, Counselor Meddy?
Thank you. I guess I have a few, Mitch. The... Yeah, we have a convergence of some code changes that we're looking at. And so I want to ask you about, you know, are limiting ag exempt within the Vancouver growth area, especially in the area of building conversions of existing buildings within that urban growth area that may be used for equestrian uses, whether it's just a barn or a covered arena? And some of the... What we're looking at as far as perhaps looking at acreage as continuing perhaps that ag exempt... I guess what I'm looking at, what's the impact on what you're looking at with it for the equestrian community with these potential limitations on ag exempt in the certain categories that you've already outlined for us?
Okay. So to... I'm going to divert just a little bit to feedback we received. When we took ag exempt structures and draft, potential draft changes to them, they were very specific in the responses, and quote, "As it pertains to existing structures..." This is generally the feedback they gave us, is that the... Their preference is that the county allow ag exempt structures in legal, law enforcement lots of at least one acre size, provided required setbacks can be met. And they also reiterated their preference for allowing conversion of existing ag exempt structures, group U unclassified to two group U uses, other group U uses, but non-ag related, with minimum review and permitting. Because at the current time, ag structures are permitted just about in every district, the way these draft changes are being proposed is that ag structures would likely be able to continually utilize on properties that are specific to ag industry. They have some sort of activity that would be considered agricultural activity. An animal husbandry and equestrian boarding and so forth may fit into that or couldn't fit into that. And this is speculative only, because this is something council would have to really work with community planning lots, to make sure that, you know, that we're being mindful of all the GNA requirements inside and outside the area in the north county. But right now, to answer your question, Counselor Meddy, the changes being proposed in ag exempt structures would not have a prohibitive effect on equestrian facilities, borders, large or small, as long as it's aligned zone, and the activity on the premises with ag subsidies. From my perspective, that's my observation.
So I take from that, because I heard a lot of maize and idiots, that we definitely need to be careful of that issue, otherwise it may very well may be impacted if they're not considered within an agricultural use.
That's correct. And there was good discussion about historical agricultural uses on smaller lots, smaller properties. Again, when we took it to D, they felt that a one acre minimum was sufficient in size, and that there was probably... I think that may be surmising that there's unlikely any ag-related industry on lots smaller than that, unless it's just your typical garden variety, growing your own personal garden in your residence, on your residential property. But it is important to note that, you know, the other feedback that we got of people that were supportive of continued enforcement of the code, pretty much as it's written, were also expressed as what they're concerned about traffic volume and use of shared roads and shared access and the impacts it may have on the cost of the debt, the various effects of increased traffic from heavy-duty vehicles and truck trailers and, you know, semi bringing supplies and hay and so forth into the facilities. So yes, we really need to be careful and mindful. One of the things that I heard that I really liked about the feedback was the suggestion for a stakeholder task force. And that is definitely one of your options, if you'd like to report it and that, you know, exploring real, getting to the nuts and bolts of this.
Sheriff? If you may, I have just one quick question. I wanted to make sure to be on. Regarding existing small businesses, I'll just call it a small business, a smaller equestrian operation. And I'm assuming that they, as a requirement of their license or approval, that they have insurance, and that the insurance would cover their facility. I'm just going to talk about a covered arena, if you will. If an insurer is willing to insure a property, meaning they think it's safe for the operation enough to get them coverage, is that enough for us? I mean, can we just defer to the private insurance industry to, you know, not put on any other owner's requirements like sprinklers and, you know, improved shear factor and things like that within a farm-like structure?
In all honesty, I think that would be kind of difficult, because this would create a compliance requirement that would have to be continually monitored and reported as a condition of allowing a small operation. I can tell you, counsel, that, you know, over the past three years, we've only had seven or eight complaints about equestrian facilities countywide. And given the sheer numbers that are out there, and I do not have a count, but I know of... I'm saying that there's 100 or more would be very reasonably accurate. For the most part, folks that do have these facilities are managing them properly. They are good examples. We don't receive complaints on them. And I think that's a factor we need to consider moving forward, is just how much change... How can we look at our good examples and find some help there and support there going forward? So we model what's working, or what we need to model after what's working. Because I think there were a lot of those folks in the audience and participating and listening in on the session. And they do do a good job, and I, you know, I have friends among personal friends, so... It's... There's no complaint about, and they have neighbors that live mighty close.
Okay, Counselor Alford?
Yeah, thank you. So just a couple things. Well, yeah, this year, I think there's between 20 and 30,000 equines in Clark County, so we have a large number of horses here. thirty thousand declines in Clark County, so we have a large number of horses here, a large number of really good facilities. So I think before this spreadsheet, I think we had a maybe a task force, so I'd be interested in seeing that. And then, I think, you know, Councilman just mentioned this, I think when we talk about the equestrian code and when we talk about the ag exempt structure or permitting of ag structures, we do have a conversion, and it's simply our giving orders and expenses permit process for very simple structures and the costs associated with the process. If we could look at that as regards both the ag structure and the equestrian code, I think we can use some really good handway here for our community. The other thing is, I didn't talk about this anymore with us, but the ag structure is this conversion process. I'd like to see a codified process so that it's simple and straightforward and not up for much interpretation, but we have the ability to have a conversion process in writing that people can count on when a structure moves from a permitting exempt structure to something that's not radically different. So an ag building to a garage of some kind or to a barn, a different use of a barn. Anyway, I'd like to see us work on that. I'm not expecting to do that like in the next, you know, fourteen days, but I feel like to see it be something in the next thirty to sixty to ninety days on that. If we get something in writing, we can drop in this code. So I like what we're hearing, I think we captured what we heard from our stakeholders really well. I like the idea of putting together a stakeholder group as we move forward with this public process and see what we can achieve some resolution on this. But maybe by the time we connect the timeline here, I don't know, the conversion, the conversion might change to kind of the equestrian code as well, but maybe that's something that we talk about.
The coasts do reference each other in a number of locations already, so it would be prudent to make sure that we, in addressing one, we also address the other. The timeline you have before you is the planning permission process, and this is next available and to give us time for the task force and public review online, you know, utilizing technology as much as possible in our current environment, still maintaining a strong connection to the public so we get their feedback and they can see the work we're doing along the way. And this gets us through the end of mid-April, is when we can come out the other side of this and have something for council review and consideration. And it's a typical timeline, it does allow another opportunity for public feedback. We do get to go back to D, and it's got all the great things that Clark County will make and utilizes to engage the public, but also to be mindful of our responsibility to assist the GMA and the environment.
Okay, I just, I think when I said the word codified and making it simple, sometimes that's been acting wrong. I mean, unfortunately, often when things are codified, it gets worse, not better. So if we are going to codify anything, let's make it simple. And I believe that is actually what Councilor Olson was saying, but at the same time, you know, let's just really be careful how we handle some of these things. I, remind me why we are doing, redoing the equestrian codes? This is a long time now. Can you refresh the historical situation where we decided to do this?
Yes, approximately two years ago, we received a number of complaints about equestrian facilities and the fact that they had either unpermitted structures or were commercial in nature, and they were having a deleterious effect or perceived deleterious effect on the surrounding neighbors. So we investigated, we wrote a number of notices and courtesy notices, and the response to that over time became more and more supportive, you've heard from a lot of supporters of the industry saying, hey, this is unfair of us. And when that became a crescendo, they approached council and asked for assistance in looking and reviewing the codes to make them clearer, to mitigate the costs and the permitting requirements for their facilities. They also said repeatedly that equestrian activity and horse ownership in Clark County is part of the county's DNA. And as a result of that, they felt that council and the county itself had a responsibility to ensure that preserving horse ownership and the ability for folks to do it effectively and reasonably, you know, without too much cost, would realize the benefit, their intended benefits to the whole of the community, including the special needs groups that benefit so much from being close to horses and interacting with horses. So this became a council issue after your January meeting and your direction committee was, let's do the public participation, let's do some outreach, let's get some feedback and move on and see where we end up and whether or not we feel we should make any changes.
Right, thank you, Mitch. I appreciate that because some of what you said in your presentation also talks about making the definitions more clear and changing or clarifying public and private, et cetera. So that will help both the equestrian community and those throughout, maybe who have, who have some issues. The other thing, when you mentioned that equestrian activity and animal husbandry is possibly speculative, are they not agricultural, as agricultural, not issues, but they are not defined as agriculture, as in like crop growing?
No, 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 they are defined as, as, and livestock agricultural uses. The challenge is, you know, how big an operation you have to be to be considered public or commercial? And is there an issue with commercial activity associated with equestrian facilities that are smaller, that are just doing it to support their operational costs and not doing it as a, you know, a massive business, but can they do it within the rural areas because that's where it has at?
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for that proposition. So I would be in favor of having this task force that you talked about earlier that really gets into the minutia, so that they're looking at all of the angles. So moving forward on that, to pass the council's desire, I would like to see that, you know, once again, we elicit and ask for people that are in this industry to really dig in and look at this carefully. So we're not harming, so we're helping and not harming the community. Because I agree, the equestrian community is the DNA of Clark County. I mean, the numbers are phenomenal. Other questions or comments to the council?
Just, I do want to reinforce what you just said, and what you just said, so I am in favor of moving forward. We really need to eliminate some of the overhead that's there and nonsensical from insulated stalls to curfews to sprinklers where they're not appropriate or costs involved. We need to make this process simple and not impactful. I just, I think it's very telling that we have so many purported equestrian facilities up there and very few of them have any kind of permits to operate. It doesn't tell me that they're wrong. What it tells me is that the code is so onerous that everyone wants to avoid it and not get dabbled into it. So we need to improve all of it, and the task force is the way to go so all the stakeholders can be heard.
Chair.
Councilor?
I want to add one more comment with regard to this conversion process, and if it's not clear in our code, then we leave it at interpretation and then we get confusion. So that's really my direction, is just to try to make it simple and clear so that both staff and our applicants and community know what the process is, so that we can not allow the interpretation and people looking at the answers, you don't have people over time.
Right, right, I agree, I agree, thank you. Other questions or comments? So, who's speaking? Okay, I thought I heard somebody speak. So shall we, then, if it agrees then with the council that we go ahead and kind of move forward with the timeline that we see on our screen and have made available to form kind of a task force and work this out? Well, so I can't, yeah, I see at least three of us, so I can't see the other two for some reason, because there are only so many, considering time. At any rate, okay, well, let's do that then. Thank you, Mitch, I appreciate your work on this and your continued work.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, we, let's cover then the next item, which is accessory unit versus ag structure.
I think on this one, Dan Young's going to go over the permit process and what it looks like for the two different processes first.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Council, for the record, Dan Young, Director of Community Development. I was asked to talk about the permit process for accessory structures and then also what we do with the ag exempt structures. Currently, the accessory structures, and those are defined as accessory to the primary use of a property, these are typically done, just like every other building permit, they're done as an ACC or ADS, that's how we track them. And it's just the same process as any other building permit, you know, you submit an application online, appointment is scheduled, we review everything, per fee of pain, the paperwork submitted, we review against all applicable codes, buildings don't need stormwater. And then once approved, the permit is issued and the construction starts with regular inspections throughout the process until the final inspection is done. That's for accessory structures. The ag exempt, Title 40 contains an exemption for structures that are solely for agricultural purposes. We have an exemption from a building permit that zoning and environmental codes are still applicable. Our current process requires an applicant who wants to obtain this exemption to submit a form, which we have online, and along with a site plan to review. The permit center staff assigns these cases an MIS member and is used to track them because this is for tracking purposes, so this is an exemption from a building permit, but this is a way that we could, you know, have it tracked. Everything in the case says that this is sort of an ag exempt, but the permit center staff reviews the site plan against area of due GIS mapping to ensure that the proposed structure meets the applicable setbacks and does not get environmentally sensitive area and does not create technical hazards. If the building location and use is not beconforming to the exemption, it's approved. Once approved, we notify the applicant, the person who constructs the building, but because of the exemption to a building permit, there are no inspections performed until the building is complete. After it's complete, at some point, we typically send out a lead staff member, lead building inspector, who just makes sure that the building is placed in the proper, in the proper location on the property in accordance with the approved site plan. And then if that building owner or subsequent owners decide to change the use of the structure, building permit would be required. And what I'm saying, change the use of structures such as going from an agricultural use to a shop or something for human habitation, then they have to get permits to do such. The issue with that is, as you were saying earlier, Chair, that the, it's quite onerous for that owner to verify all the work and everything to get it done, but that's what we have right now for our process. I also have Max Booth on here, who is our interim permit manager, to help me if there's some questions I can't answer. But are there any questions for me at this time?
Chair, any questions for the council? Or comments on the council?
Dan, can you define accessory structures? What's included in accessory structure?
So an accessory structure is something like a shop, a garage, poolhouse, an ADU, you know, it's an accessory used to a residence, you know, where we have, in the code, the exemption of an agricultural structure is defined, which is, you know, constructed and used solely to house farm or forestry implements, ag, green poultry livestock or other agricultural or wood products. So if it's, so accessory, just like I said, there's more of a shop, garage, or even an ADU, so.
So, yeah, no, this is, and it actually creates larger questions and concerns, so basically, the way our code is written, we would hold an applicant to the same criteria if they're building an ADU than if they were building a shop or a garage?
Well, for building construction, you know, for, you know, share, wind load, snow load, all that, yes, those would be the same for a shop or for an ADU if they're, you know, because there's human habitation.
Yeah, to me, I think if we're going to get, where we see a use or potential use of this permitting of an ag structure is basic shops, hole barns, simple structures where people might want to build something that isn't complicated, they might want to put some other detractors, maybe cars or what have you in there, but that's, we hold them to a really high standard in terms of both cost and process. And I'm wondering if there's some way, you know, maybe not, again, not today, we're talking about any buildings, but in the accessory structure conversation, if there's some way to simplify that process of certain types of structures as well?
Yeah, and, you know, just, when we talk about pole structure and, you know, I think you use the term simple, and sometimes actually a pole structure can be more complex than like a typical garage of stick frames, because you have the forces that are then concentrated more in loads, just on point loads and that kind of stuff. Excuse me, so in some aspects, yes, they are simpler, but they can get a lot more complex depending on the size, because when you have the wind shear and the weight on it and stuff, you just have to make sure that it's properly designed.
Dan, maybe I could help shed some light on this too? The building code has separate provisions for, depending on what the use of the structure is. So if it's used for habitation, like a single-family dwelling versus a hotel, there's different requirements involved based on the tariffs. The basis of accessory structures, there's fewer and fewer requirements in the code, however, as it sits, all permitted structures have to follow the same permitting process. At the three thousand foot view, they do, they get permits, and as they're used, they get against applicable codes based on their use. It gets complicated because the other codes surrounding the issue, zoning and stormwater and environmental, those make no distinctions about what the usability is. The impacts of the stormwater are the same whether you're going to live inside it or keep cars inside it, you still have a big roof that's going to create more permanent surface for this. So that for some of the struggles, when we talk about this huge owner's process of permitting, it is not just the building code, that has provisions built in based on use, but the other things too, that the other codes self-assure me when it comes to what the building is used for. So does that make sense or help?
It makes sense to me, how about you, Councilor?
I'm not, I couldn't hear that, yes.
Yeah, I see the distinction very clearly. Okay, that's the accessory structure question that I think has been addressed. Are there other questions or comments? About the process, I guess. There ain't, I've seen none. What are the other issues that we need to cover on this?
So, I did want to, I know that there's been previous conversations with the council regarding the one acre or the ag buildings, and I believe there's a draft ordinance that's up on your screen right now, that's gonna be considered next week, but just to provide some clarity on the D feedback, and it looks like we might, yes, we do, thank you, Eric Galimo is also here from D, if there's any direct questions for him, but just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that part of the conversation with D is that with regards to one acre lots, they believe it did seem reasonable in the UGA versus any size lots, so I just wanted to make sure that that clarity was provided to the council, because I think there was some misinformation, so if the council has any other direct questions on D feedback regarding these draft changes, Eric is here to help provide that, and I know Mitch and Lindsay are here as well.
Okay, now, is there clarification that needed that, that we would like to ask Eric about? So, if, if I may, they, so this proposed draft as it is right now, did it fully incorporate, and had D looked at it, did it fully incorporate the recommendations down through the acre for a lot, and my concern with that is, then how does that relate to setbacks, do setbacks change, whether it's a 10 acre, 5 acre, or 1 acre partial?
Eric, is he not muted?
Even though, yeah, even if that shows you're not muted, you're not muted, you are muted here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, it might have been a microphone issue, sorry about that. Okay, so, Eric Galimo asked you, you're a person in D, and we did have a pretty robust discussion about ag structures, and it's been one of those issues that's been quite contentious, and there's, there's a few different pieces to the issue. But, to answer your question, what, what you guys showed in the code here that was distributed, we did support that, we did make a few caveats, and one is this is, it includes one issue, and I think it was an issue that staff has, because these are abused, and it should be, they shouldn't be abused, and, and the code changes that are suggested help prevent that abuse of the ag exemption issue. However, some of the bigger issues are why people are going for the ag exemption, and it's because the permitting process for an outbuilding or shop is so challenging that they just jump to this, because it's a way to get around it. So, I think to really address the whole thing, we need to look at how to make the permitting process simpler, and just for example, I was just listening to the thing about the horse arena issue, and we're gonna have a committee, there's gonna be a whole worker, but there's one piece that I noticed that is a huge barrier to putting a commercial question facility, and it's that, in the rural area, it is almost impossible to meet commercial fire protection. One, you don't really have water, you can't do it with wells, and the other issue, and and part of it, is, isn't really needed for an arena. It's more necessary where you have a boarding facility or where you have hay, but in an arena itself, you don't necessarily have a lot of combustible materials, and I, I worked with a client on a, on an arena, and when they did their, during some research around the country, most places don't require stripers systems and horse arenas, it's impossible to do, and you don't want them in a rural, in an urban area either, so the property value is too high, so it's little things like that that are an issue, and it's similar to these ag structures, where the reason why people abuse it is because they can't get a permit. So that's one piece. The other thing that we mentioned was the real issue was the conversion. So, you do have an old barn, and the character of the neighborhood changes, now it's in a state lot, someone has built a house, and they want to put, you know, they wanna use it as a shop or a garage, just sort of their own personal equipment. Well, it no longer is, like technically, an ag structure, they're no longer farming the property, it's now in a state lot. So what do you do, how do you handle that structure? And the way I think right now is that you have to retroactively permit it. Well, when you have a structure that wasn't built to the code, it is impossible to do, so what do you do, you tear down a perfectly good structure? It doesn't make any sense. There has to be a, a process that's simple, that you can convert these structures to personal use. It's different if you're gonna live in it, if you're gonna run a business out of it, those are different situations, but most of the time, it's being converted for personal use, and maybe there's a basic health and safety check, maybe there's some kind of a fire alarm, make sure it has smoke detectors, things like that, but you can't retroactively structurally permit something like this, you don't have planning for it, so those are really the issues, so, I know I got a little off topic, but the, the response is, yes, we just support this language, but this is a solution to the abuse, but there's other pieces that still need to be done to really make the whole thing work, so it's just comprehensive that.
Thank you, Eric. When I read the minutes or the answers to questions that we got from D, it does not sound to me like you do support it. Sounds to me like any size within the UGA is, you know, not five acres, but any size within the UGA. The other question, you know, the ability to go through, well, we just talked about that, again, question three, should the permitted ag agricultural structures be within UGA, or does the draft have written, and applying it outside the UGA makes sense? And the answer to that is, you allow agricultural permitted ag structures on parcels of any size within the UGA, so, has, has the draft gone to change?
I think with the, do we have that, we pull up for the thing, because I think that was a 1 acre, that was kind of compromised, so originally they wanted 5 acres, and I know D discussed 5 acres, to us, we can have agricultural, like legitimate agricultural uses on smaller parcels. You have to show it, you have to show that you're, you're doing something agricultural, not just building a, a shop for personal use and trying to get around the permits. But, we did, we did mention that it should be allowed inside the UGA in an area that still hasn't converted yet, because there may be other reasons why that's not converted. There's, there's large areas inside the UGA that don't have sewer, that are still functioning as agriculture, and as long as they're still using that use, they should be able to get the, the exemption for an legitimate agricultural use. Just because they get brought in doesn't mean that they still don't have a right to their vested use, so that was a concern we had, that you shouldn't limit it to just outside the UGA, you should be able to do it inside the UGA, if you meet the same thresholds or requirements, do have a commercially viable agricultural use.
And on, sorry, Eric, and on the parcels of 1 acre or larger, I think we put that recommendation off.
And, and scientifically, that, that's something that we thought seemed reasonable. It is not a firm number, 5 acres, it's been passed that kind of like, this sniff test where, no, you can have commercially viable agriculture on less than 5 acres. 1 acre seemed like a reasonable compromise, and I can't say it was based off any certain facts or any new principles, it was a judgment call based on what we've seen out in the field and what we felt was a good, you know, minimum for commercially viable agriculture.
And as a counter, I just could sort of answer to your question, there wasn't this communication from the D meeting, and Kathleen can talk about this, between what the conversation was, what the recommendation was, and what information we were provided, so that's why we're having this conversation again today, if we've got, personally, we've got our price before.
Okay, so, thank you, Dan, I'll let Kathleen speak and just a minute, but Rebecca, did you put this in a page where the actual, it's pages two and three that we're looking at? So, we have to see what the changes are, it needs clearly said 5 acres unless it's changed.
It has changed, it's the 5 acres or the non-conforming parcels, at least 1 acre inside.
I'm sorry, so this is the most current draft?
This is the most current draft, here, yes. This is what's scheduled on for Tuesday, here.
So it's only non-conforming acres that will be able to do this in less than 5 acres?
Right.
But if you're in the 1 acre gap, that doesn't sound right.
That would lie assuming for what the council was asking for after the last council committee. Now, the question was posed to D of whether the minimum should be solely 5 acres, or whether it should allow the smaller, if you have some of these non-conforming parcels, to allow the smaller non-conforming parcels to be treated the same as a larger parcel if they're in, if they're a non-conforming parcel in one of those zones that would typically require a 5 acre or a larger parcel, and keeping in mind that it doesn't mean you can't get, you can't build something, you just have to go through the permit process, so these are the only structures that we can make the permit exempt.
Right, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Councilor, what?
This D is a 1 acre lot in a cluster, is it considered non-conforming?
That, I wonder if you're taking it and then get back?
No, it'd be conforming then, because it meets, it meets the code.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Madam Chair, if I could, so, okay, well, just a minute, so if that is a conforming lot, it would not be eligible to have a, an ag structure on it, a non-permitted ag structure?
Correct. It would, it would require to go through the permit process.
Right, okay. Councilor, maybe?
And going back to Erica, I have a question about setbacks, whether it's, you know, 10, 5, or 1 acre lot, do the setbacks vary by the size of the partial?
No, by the zone. So, it's not by the size of the parcel, it's the setback to make from the zone and use.
So, and, and this language I'm seeing here is slightly different than what we saw at D that we did recommend, and I'm looking back at our notes, and, you know, we did not feel that the 5 acre parcel size was appropriate, we thought 1 was, 1 acre was more appropriate, kind of based on what we said before, and we also didn't differentiate between inside urban growth and outside urban growth boundary, so it is a little bit different, but in general, when we left the meeting, with that, we, I, I think we were on board with what they were trying to do and the intent, which is to try to prevent the abuse and calling everything ag structures, and it has to be somewhere where it's appropriate, so, it has to, they have to show that they have a, a, a use.
So, just to clarify, there was an initial language that was set to D that was different than this at D's first meeting, and then based upon our feedback that came back, when the council asked that question, because the council wanted to keep the urban growth boundary provisions within there, and then wanted to return to D with the question of, do we have to supply a share, or do we allow the 1 acre inside in those non-conforming parcels? That question was all that went back to D at the November meeting, and so on the basis of D's response and subsequent council discussions, that's how this draft was created, that this is the draft that's been publicly noticed and sent out back for the couple of weeks.
Madam Chair, I, I would really, I'd like, really like to see this current draft go back to D and have them work on it, and, and answer basically the same question, whether they support it or not. The other comment I wanna make is, you know, what was explained as far as the ag exempt process, to me sounded pretty slick and effective and good, but obviously, we know around the county, there have been times when that hasn't worked at all, and so, I'm wondering, really, if this gets to the real problem of the abuses that we know about, I feel a little constrained, but I don't wanna mention specifically which one I'm talking about, so, those two areas, one I'd like to send this back to D, have them just flesh it out a little bit more, because this is a big change for our ag exempt community, so I'd like to get it right, and then I'd really like to have a little bit more focus on, okay, well, even if we put existing process in place for ag exempt, how did certain abuses that are well-known to us occur? What was the reason for that? Because it wasn't this code that would have prevented it.
I actually think that that would be my preference as well. I, I don't even know that we need this, I've said that before, so I apologize for restating my point of view on it, I don't like to be abused either, but I'm not sure that this draft would be abused, and I do not wanna make it more onerous for people who have private property to, to do some things on their, you know, get all this permission to put things on the property, understanding that, I know, it's not a freewheeling thing, but I really believe that it would be best to send this back and redline or change what you, what D thinks really is workable, workable, not onerous and necessary. I, I think, you know, changing codes to make a, anyway, changing codes is a big deal, and this is a big deal, and so I think that we need to get it right.
So, excuse me, I just wanted to make sure that I was representing exactly the D's side decision, so I pulled up a minute from December, it was a very, very quick discussion, so we reviewed it in detail on, I think, September, and then we came back and Mitch had, you know, one question, and the question was, do we feel that the 5 acres is appropriate, or are you really suggesting we go down to 1? And D, this supported going down to 1, there was still some discussion about inside or outside of boundary, but in general, the second part of it, where the applicant has to certify that they're actually farming for, so we supported that 100%, that, that is the part that gets rid of the abuse. I, I think there may be some unintended consequences in the language that finally came through, because it's still certified, but it, it puts the 1 as non-conforming, and I do agree that it's not necessarily just non-conforming. If you have a 2 and 1/2 acre parcel in the urban growth boundary even, that is an active farm, let's say it's a blueberry farm, just gonna use that out there, and they don't want to, that, put a barn in, that is still an ag use, it's still certifiable, even though it's in the urban growth boundary, it may be in an area outside of battlegrounds, urban UGA, it doesn't have sewer, and there's no plan to have sewer within the next 10 years, they still need to be able to have a living, and they still need to be able to use the property for ag, so that was our point, and how did we craft that language that gives it to the abuse, but still allows that commercial agriculture, which, you know, we still need and, so, that, that was our, that was our summary, and I do, we're looking at it now, the, we wanted to go down to 1 acre, and it doesn't necessarily matter where they're at, they just have to show that it's, that they can show it and prove.
Or, or it's all for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um...
But I don't believe you can go back, that was our position.
Okay.
I think with me, we've seen it enough times, it was very quick, that feedback can go back to staff, and I would have a decision, so, if there is something that, you know, that, that was our discussion, I think we can get there, and it's really your decision, this is just a suggestion, we're advising you, we're not saying this is the way you should do it, this was based on our experience and in our discussion, that was our recommendation, so.
Which is why you, why we asked you in the first place, you, you, guys, have the experience, you're out there doing it, so, and we do appreciate it, I, I know you're a volunteer for everything, so, we appreciate your input. Councilor, also?
Yes, thank you. So, so Eric, thanks for the feedback, I appreciate that and the clarification. If we chose, if we go forward next week, which I assume that we will, we can make some of these changes on the diet, it's hard by deliberation, if we chose to go to 1 acre in the rural area or 1 acre in the urban area, we can, we can have that conversation on the diet next week. But I have a question about, if the applicant certi, excuse me, certifies that there's active farming, forestry, etc., what if they certify and that's not what happens? What's the consequence to that? Because right now, we have examples of where somebody has said that's going to be their use, and there really been a consequence, so where's this key in the certification if they interpret what they're doing?
Yeah, those are the other things that you brought up, that D even, and those are the concerns, right, this is like one piece of a bigger problem. This is like one piece of a bigger problem.
I can also request some light on that. When you have these types of situations happen, typically they're being forced. And all of this complaint driven. So labor or someone complains that something's taking place, they got off D. And code enforcement will then kind of go into the investigation mode, drive out there, take some pictures. And if they find that they are in fact not complying with the ag exemption, send them a letter telling them, you know, they need to get the structure permitted or use appropriately, or, and they kind of go down the code enforcement road. The thesis we say in that typically, it takes a little time to get there. They've got to give them an opportunity to correct their situation, and then there's fines received and liens ultimately to get the property to comply.
Commissioner Olson, this is paid up all the speakers. The only thing I guess I would add to that is that there are also mechanisms in the code under Title 32 that would allow the county to suspend or revoke, uh, it wouldn't be a permit here, but it would be essentially revoking the ag exemption and occupancy that would go along that until the issue is addressed.
Yeah, and then still, that's what Blue Warehouse is in residential neighborhood, so.
I guess the other, the other thing that we had talked about at some point along the lines, and there is a little bit of ambiguity here about what exactly certified means. I think there is a, we could, the county could adopt an administrative, you know, application process to conform with this and find a way to, to give effect to this language. We had talked at one point, I don't think the council was supportive of the idea of a covenant, but that was another way to potentially give notice to future landowners of the, of the limitations on the property and the effect of converting the use.
I'm actually, I'm going to make this suggestion that we not have the hearing on Tuesday. That takes two days to make these changes. I don't want to change it from the diet. I think there's more, it's more complicated than changing a few words. I think maybe this entire code change should deal more with certification and if we can find a way to do that. Unfortunately, even what Taylor was saying, if there's an administrative process, that's going to cost money. It costs us money as a county to look at these things and administer it. Therefore, that's going to be a cost factor. It all costs money. And what, unfortunately, I believe we're trying to cure exactly one piece of property, and we are changing the entire code for the county because of one property. This is bad law. This is the way bad law is made. So.
This is not, repeatedly the abuses that have taken place with regard to this code. It's not one. This one is the glaring one, probably the trial of the county's backlash issue, but it's not the only one.
So, but there have been very few complaints or more of a showcase than this unglary example. And with all respect to Tyler, and the initial presentation we had on how ag exempt works, there's a huge disconnect there as showcased by this one property. Because essentially, a property can build anything that he wants without a permit and then get away with it. And then now we're going to change the code here. So I, I think we need more work on this. And so I will withdraw my request to send it back to D, because it sounds like they've had their time with it. And certainly, I would, if we are going forward with this, I want to make this as available as possible inside as well as outside the urban growth area, depending on the use of the property. And I certainly support going down to one acre, not one, they meant to five acres. But having said that, I really, I want to, I think we need to spend more time on this. I think we need more time in executive session regarding that one example of a problem.
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask, our rules and procedures, I understand, require two counselors to put something on the agenda. I think only two, we should be able to pull this. If there are two counselors that want more work on it, and...
That's a stretch. That is a big stretch.
How, how is it?
Because if three of us want to go forward, that's not the majority.
Okay, wonderful.
And Erica, I want to switch on the spot for D. I have another question for you though. Would this conversion language or conversion process be something that D would be interested in working out with us?
Yes, yes, we definitely would, and we'd be happy to. And I don't want to say we don't need to review this again. We're happy to provide any feedback at your request of us. I do want to make sure we're moving forward, because this is, we do support staff on trying to get rid of this abuse. And I think that's a right way to do it. We're just, we're really trying to make sure there's not unintended consequences. And make sure that if we are going to make it more stringent here, I don't think any ag structure council should have, they should have to come to the county, they should have to submit a site plan. And I think some of them aren't even doing that right now. They're just popping up. And that's, that's not okay, because then there's no control over setbacks. There's no control over use. There's no certification. So we need, we need more control over these structures. And I think staff has a pretty good idea how to do that, so we support it in that. We just also want to make sure that we're hitting others. What if, and you guys brought it up, it was a great comment. What happens if these changes, or they don't? What's the recourse? There has to be a process in place for that conversion. And it shouldn't be so restrictive that people will never do it, and they continue to abuse it, abuse the system. But yes, we're happy to help.
And I think that's the question, the discussion here. Julian and Erica, I think that's where we need to put some emphasis on not, on what separate code change.
Well, I think there are two separate conversations that are connected, but not inextricably. So, again, back from the beginning, we were talking about the questioning. If you have a permit process and cost and conversion questions, do create some of these abuses. But we can also mitigate them by going through this step so that we, we sure that these ag exempt structures are not built, or permanently come structures are not built in a residential neighborhood. And right now, they're out everywhere. And there's no, there's no delineation to whether they can or can't build them. They just build them.
Well, I wanted to hear that, and, I'm sorry, hear you? I didn't hear that from the initial presentation. You know, if, if Sam had done the review that they said they would do, zoning and GIS and, I mean, in some examples, you wouldn't, then you clearly see that ag exempt would have no ag exempt purpose within a residential, developed residential neighborhood. So, I mean, that's, so again, that's the part we probably need to talk about more in executive session where someone just builds.
If I may, this is Max's report record. The process of reviewing these and assigning them an MIS number to check those issues is relatively new. Last, 18 months, two years ago. So just, just for a point of clarification, there was a time, still is it supposed, that people just build them, self-declare them ag exempt, and someday down the road, they come in for a different permit, and the building is discovered, and they go, oh, yeah, that's my building, but we have nothing on record. So this kind of new process of documenting them as a MIS case has then become discoverable in GIS for future homeowners and things of that nature is just 18 months or two years old.
So, Max and Commissioner, I think, actually, that clarifies something for me, that this is a relatively new process and may cure some of what we're trying to, what's trying to be accomplished in the change of this ordinance. I just, I guess I'm not sure why there's such a rush if we have questions. Even though we agree that we need to rid ourselves of abuse of this, there may be other ways of going about it, or a better way, or using this process that Max just told us about. Are we are using that? Is that enough? Is it, is there something else that we can add that will, that will get rid of these abuses without, without changing this other ordinance? Or at least changing it as more less restrictive than it currently is, as written? I just, I just plead with you, so give us more than two days. Give the staff more than two days, and give us more time to flesh out what the issues are, how they can be solved, without a lot of administrative time, effort, and cost, and cost to our constituents, which is cost to our departments as well. But then we charge our constituents for that administrative work. And muck up the, we muck up the process, because now we're, we added more, more to the process, and therefore employees and staff are working on those and leaving some of the other things behind or hidden behind. You know. I don't know what else to say, except, I guess, I guess I'll ask the council. This has been mostly a conversation with Commissioner Simba, Commissioner Blum, and Lent. I don't, do you have any comments?
We've been looking at this for months, probably years, so I don't understand where the comment that we're rushing anything comes from. But I'm fine with moving forward with this to a hearing, and if there's amendments that people want to make on Tuesday, we can certainly look at those, if people want to propose amendments now. But I don't think we need to keep taking more time. This has been going on for quite some time. D's looked at it twice. We've had multiple council time work sessions. So there's not any rush that's been happening here. I'm fine with it forward Tuesday.
I also, I actually don't have a problem with the, with the ordinance that's written, so I'm fine with moving it forward.
Okay, I guess we've discussed this then. And I guess be ready with your sharp pen pal for, for amendments on the fly. Although we have talked about it, I think we better know what these amendments are before going into it, and know what repercussions there are. So, we'll move on to, thank you very much for your participation. Hi everyone who's participating, Erica for you giving your time, and staff for helping with it. You've heard what the council said, what, now I guess get ready for what the amendments might be. And frankly, Commissioner Blum, I don't recall talking about this for years. So, and I'm not completely numb, you know, I'm not completely numb that I, my memory is gone. So, we have, you might have, the council may have had a, one or two work sessions on it, but I just take issue with the fact that we've been talking about this for years. You might have, but this isn't, this, we haven't. So, we're going to move on now to new business. Thank you all. 2.1, C Pacer.
Hello, so the C Pacer program. So in 2020, this is actually another legislative update. So in 2020, the Washington State Legislature passed 2405, which you can see there, which created the C Pacer program, which stands for Commercial Property Access, Clean Energy and Resiliency. And this type of program, Washington out of the R at the end, but there are a number of other states that have a C P A program that are for, specifically for that clean energy. Washington out of the R, which allows vacuum regolith, stormwater measures, fire protection, in addition to the clean energy efficiency. And what this does is it allows property owners to access financing for these qualifying energy efficiency, renewable energy, water conservation improvements. And the financing stays with the property, but the county would have a role in this, in that there would be a county staff person or people that would review applications and then would process the lien papers that would go onto the property. But collection of the, you know, payments for the loan and that sort of thing would stay outside of the county, and that would be between the building owner and the lender, the financial lender. And the good thing about this is that it allows a clean energy program to be put onto a building that the financing mechanism goes with the property. So it doesn't, you don't have issues with the sale, it will continue to go with the property. And it is a top priority, the lien that goes with it. So most states by this point have, not all states, but most states do. California was the first to adopt this in 2008. But most states have been since 2013 or later. But some, 2008, 2009, Oregon had this program since 2009. And so this, we wouldn't anticipate this being any type of silver bullet. But one of the examples, I don't believe that was stakeholders about this program that they gave, is, for example, on a multifamily development, you have the renters that are the ones that are going to be paying for the electric bills. And so there's less of an incentive for a building owner to push energy, you know, for example, a solar system on the building, because the building owner isn't the one to receive the reduction in cost for those electric bills. This provides a mechanism that hopefully helps people survive and fund this thing. But we don't anticipate a lot of them. There was one developer in the area who has a couple of projects that he was envisioning using this for, but this isn't going to drastically change the landscape overnight in any way. So we have done a part spy at some stakeholders in the financial industry and the local building industry, wanting to know if the county would be interested in implementing a C P A program. When this was passed by legislature in 2020, the original legislation included funding for the Department of Commerce to create a statewide program. That funding was vetoed as part of Governor Anzley's rather large veto that was done with the budget. And so that program hasn't happened, but stakeholders have stepped in and created sort of a template for counties to use to create these programs. We did meet with the Assessor and Treasurer. Both of them are supportive of the program, acknowledging the fact that both of their offices would have a relatively negligible role with the program other than, like I said, recording it. So it's a question for the council today. This is what, if you have any high, high level questions about this, but whether or not you want to schedule a work session to bring in those industry stakeholders to give you a more detailed overview of what this program would be.
If we implement, after a work session, we decided to implement this program, does it cost us anything? Is there a first aid salary of somebody that we have to pay?
So, initially, given the estimates in terms of the workload, and that may be a question that I directed at Catherine, but initially, the, the average workload doesn't look extraordinary. And we would need to find a place to house it. Some counties across the country use their office office, some of them use an economic development office, some of them use a community planning office. So it's possible that there could be additional FTE costs, but given the low level of workload on the county staff, it would be relatively low if any.
And, 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 the two meetings that I've had with these folks, two things. One, the workload is very, very small, and the process has been very ministerial. It's literally like just checking a box, a couple boxes that these things have taken place with regard to the application. And then there is an administrative fee that can be collected as part of our, what the county... And then there is an administrative fee that can be collected as part of our, what the county would have to do. But at this point, the workload would be very, very small and really just ministerial.
So, the question is whether we want a work session?
Yeah, so I'd be in favor, I think. Brian really brought this originally to me and I'm very interested in a couple of projects that he's working on. I've spoken with a couple of our legislative legislators who have been, who are also supportive of the program. And I think at least for our work session, it would be worth the time that they could look at. So, I'm supportive.
And Madam Chair, Gary Medji here. I also spoke with some of our local legislative delegation and and conversations back and forth with Lindsay. I'm fully supportive of this. I think any of the small ministerial costs, transaction costs can be borne very easily by a small fee during the transaction. I, I haven't heard from a single person, any outline cost or shortfall or detractor of this. I do believe this had fairly strong bipartisan support when it went through the legislature. So, I'd like to move this along as well. I think it's a valuable additional tool for our private sector.
Okay, let's set aside a work session then to learn more about it and hear from the stakeholders. Okay? So, we'll just, whenever the next, or whenever it's possible for our work session.
Yeah, whether it be January.
We'll get, yeah, 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 probably January. Okay, council reports. Chair.
I have one. I received a call and had a, had a good meeting with David Poland, who is a local deaf advocate. And he was raising some concerns and questions about accessibility for the deaf and hearing impaired audience for our meetings. And we had a good conversation and he pointed out a number of places where we can, we can improve our processes. And he is going to be, if he hasn't already, reaching out to the rest of the council. He'll be reaching out in January to incoming councillor Bowerman so that he can talk to the, the full council presence in 2021. But he wanted to share some of these concerns and I think they're worthwhile. And once the rest of the council has heard from him, I'm hoping that we will be able to discuss how we can increase some of the accessibility. Thanks.
And I would just answer that. I am meeting with him tomorrow via Zoom. And I've met and talked with him before over the last couple of years. And I think his input is very valuable for us. We have, just since we've been here, we've had some complaints about people still not being able to log on and and want, and those are the non-hearing impaired people. We still have a lot of challenges with Zoom and and for those who have disabilities, you know, we've made it that much harder. So, we do need to continue to look for solutions.
Okay, thank you. Other council reports? Moving on to work session request.
Good morning, Council. Morning. Matt Hurd, Matt Hurd with Transcination Banking and Public Works. The work session request that we have before you is proposed for January to update you on the progress that we've made on the Transcination Systems Plan and our work moving forward. We'll also be presenting our Public Participation Plan that's associated with this planning document. Public Participation Plan, which was originally drafted before COVID. We initially thought that COVID era would be temporary. But we're, we had to switch the Public Participation Plan to be more virtual based. And we'd like to get your feedback regarding that. Also with me is Eric Albrecht and Loby and Rosu and Ma. And we'd like to speak to you in January.
Okay, sounds good. Unless there's any objection, we'll sit to work, work session on the Transcination System Plan. Lindsay, report on policy issues.
So, I'm actually going to turn it over. I think Brian Cass is here. I sent you out, the city of Richfield is applying for a federal program for a trail project. And they're requesting that the county do a little letter of support for that project.
Yes, thank you, Lindsay, and good morning, Council. Can you all hear me all right? All right. So, I am Brian Cass. I'm the Public Works Director for the city of Richfield. As Lindsay mentioned, we are pursuing a flat or federal length access program grant for a trail connection project that would run, starting and ending in the city, but would run through a portion of the county. This trail will be a portion of the G Creek Trail Network that will run from Herrendry to within the city, through some city parcels, through two private parcels that is connecting to Main Avenue and into the trail project that was completed in partnership with the county in 2019 that was also funded by the same federal length access program grant. Thank you, Lindsay, for pulling up the map here. So, the segment of trail that we are applying for is shown in purple on the map up in the northwest corner there. You can see the red on this map is existing segments of the trail. So, this piece of trail will complete a over two mile segment of trail and make a continuous trail from the refuge all the way south down to what we refer to as the Donut Hole, the section of county land in the center of the city of Richfield. South of the Donut Hole, we also have segments of this trail that have been completed. So, this is a pretty important project for the city. The G Creek Trail is the backbone of our trail network. It is also a, the segment of trail, and the G Creek Trail is a part of the planned preferred route for the Lewis and Clark Centennial Trail that will start down in Washougal at the Federal Refuge, running through Washougal, Vancouver, the county, up to Richfield, through the Wild Life Refuge, and then end up in the local center of the Centennial. So, we are asking for the county's support in this application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
The question is for Brian. Which question is your option? Go ahead, Derek. I'm happy to support this. When would you have it completed? What's the projected time?
So, there is a design process. This is a somewhat niche grant where it comes with the Fed, Federal Highway Administration runs the design process. I had experience with the last one. We applied for those funds in 2015, I believe it was. And construction was completed in 2019. There was some delays on that one with some weather and the like. So, I would anticipate that we would probably need construction around late 2022 or early 2023.
And do you, is this letter, do you need this right now? Is that the?
Yeah, yeah. So, the application was actually, we submitted that at the end of last week. But we were able to follow up and submit letters of support after the application deadline. So, yeah, our request would be to allow the council to support the project and provide a letter of support that would then enter the federal grant, would be.
Okay, we have, we have a draft letter that was attached, literally?
I do. But the one thing I would need today in a motion to approve is that we would approve the draft letter and that have council sign it and send it so that I can get it to Brian tomorrow. So, we don't have to wait until the next council meeting, which given the schedule would be Tuesday.
That's what I was going to do. I was going to ask for a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair, and to put your left hand to your right hand.
Yes. Was that a second? That was two seconds. Oh, okay, that's why. All right, then without objection, all of us have a say in my, I, I.
Thank you for answering. I'm sorry. I just, hey, Brian, you have probably other questions to answer this question. But how long are we going to have the Donut Hole?
Well, that's a good question. I, I think the city's position, if I speak for our council, is that we are, that we've set up some guidelines for how that area will develop. We have a specific, they call it the G Creek Plateau. That sounds a little nicer than the Donut Hole. But then we have a code that will flag that area to try and preserve the more agricultural and rural field that area has. So, our goal is to not require forced annexation. So, if property owners come to the city and are interested in annexing, we entertain those and we board on individual pieces. But it really depends on the property ownership there, when and how that area annexes into the city.
Great, thank you. Okay, so Paul and Peter said aye. 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 Question, Paul, please.
Thank you, Brian. I'm happy to.
Thank you, Brian. I'll give you that letter tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move out of this. We're going to adjourn this meeting over to an executive session for 20 minutes for pending litigation. Will there be action after we leave town?
There's no, there's no action. And I would like to add a 10 minute collective bargaining and 10 minutes for potential litigation as well. And there's no action after those as well.
Okay, all right. So, we've got 10, 20, 20, we've got 40? Is that what it was? Or was it 20, 10, and 20?
Yes, it's 20, 10, and 10. But yes, total of 40 minutes.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, we need to see you on the other side. I think we sign in for executive session, so. Thank you. Have a good day.